Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, February 16th, 2021. At one meeting announcement, council will continue to meet virtually until further notice. All meetings will be cable cast on the City Channel and live stream on the City Channel Pittsburgh YouTube Channel. Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Yeah.
Mr. Kraus. Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mr. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Here.
Eight Members present.
I am. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, President, thank you.
And Reverend Burgess, nine Members present.
Thank you. As we join from our remote locations, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain for a moment of silence following the pledge. And today I'd like to offer our moment of silence up for Joe King, who was the tenacious representative for the Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire in their union representation. And I'll give his Members a moment, a chance to say something after the meeting about Joe King. But please join me right now for a moment of silence to honor Joe after the pledge. My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, our next order of business is Proclaimations. We have one to be read into the record. Do we need to be read into the record?
No.
No, I haven't seen it. Okay, thank you. Then our next order of business from there is public comment. And I'm just going to read the rules of council. In terms of public comment, I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberations which are or may be before City Council. Profanity would not be permitted. May we have the first speaker, please? And Madam Clerk, can you call the speaker? Do you have him?
Jerry Murray.
Jerry Murray?
Jerry Murray. The next one is Richard Scobouda. Richard.
Scuba? I don't see Richard either.
The next speaker would be Masada Begovic. Near Sada Begovic.
I don't see her.
Will Parker?
I see Will Parker.
Yes. Hello, my name is Will Parker, and I'd like to say when I learned about Paduto's latest endorsements, I was livid. It seems like there's a lot of black stabbing going on. If Black Pittsburgh matters, why isn't it time for a black mayor? Burgess, who keeps telling you that now is not the time? Besides myself, you and Agany represent the same communities and have been working together for years. Is there a disconnection between the two of you that's causing Homewood and the rest of the East Side to lack resources and opportunities? We deserve transparency. What about the Pittsburgh Black-Elected Officials Coalition that you're all a part of? The message that this is sending is very disturbing during Black History Month. Lavelle, did you even consider having conversations with all of the candidates before endorsing one? Or are you doing this because your term is up and you're running for City Council again? Have all the City Council members announced their endorsements? What justice is being served by you two jumping out and backing Bill this early? Is it that you want people to know that you can't see yourselves working under the leadership of another black man from the beginning? In my opinion, you're both a part of the problem because you gave up on the possibilities before exploring them all on behalf of Pittsburgh. You didn't ask nor did you seek what else was out there or being offered. Therefore, you have attempted to cause the city to settle for less. Racism didn't declare itself a public health crisis here. It took some help. Let's read. True black, and I say this with emphasis, black City Council members endorse the reelection unquote of the same person who doesn't have an ounce of courage in him to step up, stand up, and demand real equitable diversity. Paduto pasted your endorsements on his website faster than you can say suckers. I'm done.
The next speaker.
Elaine Washington. Hi, I would just like to bring to the attention, which I think all of you are well aware, of the poor job that Pittsburgh Public Works is doing cleaning the streets for snow removal. I know that I live in a hilly area, and I know that Pittsburgh is mainly developed on hills, and they have, haven't, this is not just new. They haven't done a good job in the past 15, 16 years. I would like to know why we keep allowing it to get worse and worse and worse over the years, and why you guys are not standing up and saying, "We have to do better." There is no reason why, when I go to work at 6:30 in the morning, I can't get to work because the streets are still covered in snow and full of ice. I call every year, starting in December, and it's a fight on my hands every year. I shouldn't be the ones fighting. You should be fighting for me to make sure that they are out here doing their job. I wish that you guys or someone would oversee what they're doing, because yesterday I personally drove to the, just drove to the locations where the trucks were, and they were sitting in there. Fifteen trucks were sitting in one area, 10 trucks were sitting in another one, and people were standing around. I don't like that. And when my street was completely covered, which was a main street, and an emergency route was covered at 10:00 AM, there's something wrong. And I think you guys need to finally do something, because I know I have called my councilwoman's office over 150 times, and she has not yet replied. So back to, I know you guys aren't going to do anything, but it would be nice if you would do something. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Is Akuhana Hal Mckenna.
Greetings for peace and light in location. My title is Akuhana Hal Mckenna, and the Grand Inka of the Aroqua Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. And for those who are unfamiliar, it is what people so-called call the Indians. We are here, and we are still here, and we are here to stay. I want to speak to the food insecurities that are in this area, the lack of opportunities for so-called black people, the homelessness that I see traveling throughout the land. The education disparities are too far and wide and only getting worse due to the virtual status. I listened to Reverend Burgess speak of flexing his oversight of the school system. It is time for each of you, City Council members, to flex your oversight and do what is right for the people, to provide economic opportunity to so-called black people, especially those who acknowledge their indigenous roots. For we are the people and the natural stewards of the land. If you are wondering what are the effects of teaching people that their history began with slavery, I implore you to turn on the news and see the results of what happens when you teach someone that their history began with slavery. I would just pause on that for a moment and let that marinate. As you can see and wonder why the result of teaching someone that their history was doomed from the start, that their futures are doomed from the very start. That is the direct effect of teaching someone that their ancestors were merely just slaves. Instead, I would employ you to begin to teach the people of the land who their ancestors really are. Great farmers, great stewards of the land. We were and are the indigenous people of the land. Pull out the Arnoldist Montanis and truly educate these students, these scholars that you have housed for 12 years, and you teach them nothing about themselves. You only teach them a European perspective. And then you have the nerve, you have the audacity to make provisions for LGBTQ. And I have no bearings on what people choose to be, other than what they were born to be. But if you give them a place in this city and you give them so-called rights, then where are the rights for the people of this land? Where is the acknowledgement of the people of this land who choose to be who they were born?
Next is Jacob Klinger. Jacob?
Hang on. Hi, my name is Jacob. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Cool. My pronouns are he and him, and I'm a volunteer organizer with the Pittsburgh Union Regional Renters. We believe that housing is a human right, and we work backwards from there, and we live there every day. I am asking that you amend the monthly emergency order to give the mayor the power to ban eviction. I am hearing that you are hesitant to actually do this, and so I am also wondering what it is that you actually believe in. Because if it's protecting your tax base and the potential for growth opportunities, or the words we usually get from this building, this does that, right? There's a truckload of federal money and rent relief waiting to hit tenants and landlords, but not till next month. Evictions in the meantime are nothing more than sense of violence and ones that cost you money in your tax base. And I know you all understand this, because there are plenty of real estate interests represented on council. I'm also wondering, do you believe in doing everything you can to keep Pittsburghers healthy and safe? Because honestly, I know that like our group and our volunteers have done more to do that through this eviction crisis than y'all have, and so y'all are on our time and owe us. Because you can do this. You can, you can actually stop evictions. And we know that you know that, because the city of Harrisburg, under the authority given to all cities under the PA Emergency Management Services Act, did this exact same thing, without incident, without lawsuits, for the last two months. I don't know what they're whispering in y'all's ears about. Your hands are tied about this side of the third. You can do this. Your all's lack of curiosity and ambition and just guts has already killed people, hundreds of people. Orders for possession are being executed. New eviction hearings are being heard at this very minute. Our volunteers are at them, risking their well-being because of inaction from folks like you, which you can change. There are 300 Pittsburghers scheduled for eviction hearings right now. There are, there are still evictions happening. That's at least five deaths by a now conservative estimate out of the University of Pennsylvania. So my last question is, do y'all believe in yourselves and your own words? Because you issued a resolution late last fall, saying you think evictions should be stopped. You can do that. You do not have to cower and wait for, you know, the sign off from someone who might not be your boss in a few months. I guess I have another question, too, because while we may not always be in community with one another, we are in proximity. You are literally endangering your own lives and risking those of yours and your loved ones by not doing this. This thing that you can totally do, but no risk to anyone involved. We know y'all passed resolutions to stand on graves before. Why are you digging your own? That's my thought.
Next speaker is Joy Sable.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I too am asking you to add a city eviction moratorium to the emergency declaration renewal, because today housing advocates will tell you about eviction hearings that are still scheduled in city courts, despite the loophole-ridden state and federal eviction moratoria. They will tell you how eviction translates to deaths at a rate of one death per 60 evictions. They will tell you how cities that have not stood firm on banning evictions have five times the number of COVID deaths, presumed due to displacement and community spread. They will point out that federal relief money started in March will pay landlords up to 10 months of back and forward dated rent, and how a city moratorium can actually streamline the process. And above all, they will tell you that you can do what Harrisburg's council has successfully done, empower the mayor to stop evictions during this wave of the COVID pandemic. Almost all renters rent only one unit, and there's no presumption of competence in being a renter. I mean, taking the trash out is about as far as it goes. Many landlords own multiple units and already have to keep books, do documentation, fill out fairly complex tax forms. It is far more reasonable to expect landlords to successfully do the paperwork and receive that federal relief. It is far more efficient for support staff to work with one landlord regarding any number of units than it is to support every renter in every one of those units. State moratoria and federal moratoria have gaps. Today's state moratorium could disappear next week. The CDC hopes to get all willing-takers vaccinated by late April, but distribution and uptake vary widely. In a situation where COVID variants are developing and spreading, and we're racing that as a clock for vaccine distribution, our safety, all of us, is based on as many people as possible staying home. Let's make sure that as many people as possible have a home to stay home in. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Bryant Knuckles.
Hi, thanks so much. My name's Bryant Knuckles. I'm a drug and alcohol counselor living in Pittsburgh. I see, I'm seeing firsthand how evictions and housing vulnerability increase the mental health burden in our city. For that reason, I'm asking that you amend the emergency order to give the mayor the power to stop evictions, as we've already heard. You do have the power to do that, and I ask you to please consider doing it. There are just numerous studies that show the eviction moratorium save lives. I've included, included these in my written comments. I hope you'll be able to take a look at those. The upshot for me is that the places that have lifted moratoriums are seeing huge 540% increases in COVID deaths, and that's a very conservative estimate from some of the critiques I've seen of these. Just to put some context around that, you know, from the data I saw, 26 people died from COVID in our city last week. I mean, imagine what it would be like to have 130 people die. I know I don't want to live in a city, and I'm sure you don't want to govern in a city with those kind of numbers. I'd like to just end by drawing our attention to what the Trinity Cathedral downtown does every year on overdose awareness day. They try to humanize the people who have died from the opioid crisis by gathering families, showing pictures, and ringing a bell. Sometimes when I look at the COVID numbers, I think it's easy to kind of dehumanize the situation. But if we think what the human grief from adding that burden of 130 people, I mean, it's just immense. And I'd like to remind us that the moratorium will not cost landlords money, period. It'll save them from themselves. And, and federal relief is coming. For me personally, I'm concerned more with the equity and the value of human compassion. I can't imagine evicting someone in these conditions, the worst pandemic in generations and during the winter. To me, it's just horrible. But until we're unified in that sentiment, I think we need to do what we can to protect people who may be evicted. Thank you so much for the opportunity. Thanks.
Thank you, Brian.
Our last speaker is Anne Wright.
Hi, thank you. As an earlier speaker mentioned, there've been, there are currently about 300 evictions currently scheduled in Pittsburgh. 158 of those are scheduled during March. In addition to that, there are 150 cases already found for the plaintiff before now that where the landlord has 180 days to file for an order for possession. The sword is hanging over these folks, and there's nothing to stop the landlord from trying to get an order for possession on them tomorrow, and in 10 days, they could be on the curb. There are, there have been 20 orders for possession issued, and as far as we can tell, carried out in Pittsburgh since November 24th, when Judge Clark's order delaying eviction hearings was issued. There's, there are people, you know, even though people think there's a moratorium and this isn't happening, it is happening. We are part of efforts to try to help people. We send, we've sent over 2,000 mailers and supporting the volunteer efforts, doing the visitations at the Magisterial Districts. We're doing what we can to try to minimize it, but we can't completely stop it. You can. Among the people who are falling through the cracks currently, we have seen mothers and grandmothers who are being evicted because the landlord claims that their children or grandchildren are living there without authorization. In some cases, they're just visiting. In, in other cases, they have nowhere else to be because they themselves would otherwise be homeless. This is being allowed. This is, this is totally within the, the bounds of what is allowed under the current CDC moratorium, as is executing those orders for possession, as is issuing the orders for possession to those that have already been found, as is conducting all of those, all of those 300 hearings. You have the ability to stop this. Harrisburg, as has already been mentioned, has successfully stopped this. You can follow that example. You can authorize Mayor Paduto to implement a residential eviction moratorium in response to the current emergency conditions. Council or council itself could directly enact such a measure. If you are concerned about the, the details of that, I know that Kevin Quisenberry, Litigation Director for Community Justice Project, has put together a memorandum providing all of the details. If you are interested, if you haven't seen that yet and are interested, let me know. I can send it to you. I very much hope that you're, that you'll be willing to take this step. I think it could make a huge difference, and it could keep people from stress and potential homelessness, and you can do this. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the last speaker.
That's the last speaker?
Yes.
Thank you so much, Madam. And our next order of business will be the presentation of papers, and we have Councilman Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation. Thank you, Councilman. Good morning.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 1193, Resolution Providing for an amended lease agreement for the use of the West End Senior Center located at 80 Wabash Street, and for the provision of center services to seniors in an amount not to exceed $45,673.64, chargeable to and payable from the seniors' community program trust fund in the Department of Parks and Recreation. The city is in the process of purchasing 80 Wabash Street from the property owner Smith and Bout Bowling, and will continue to pay rent as authorized hereunder until transaction is completed.
Thank you. And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1194, Resolution Granting unto the University of Pittsburgh, their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense to install three new entrance canopies at 5051 Center Avenue, 8th Ward, 7th Council District. Bill Number 1195, Resolution Granting unto Square View Apartments, their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense, a projecting sign at 3429 Butler Street, 6th Ward, 6th Council District. Bill Number 1196, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 25 of 2021, entitled Resolution Vacating a Portion of First Avenue, a 30-foot right-of-way in the 1st Ward, 6th Council District, to add specific information in regards to payment and PWSA's line limits. Bill Number 1197, Resolution Granting unto Kara Gork, their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense, a new reinforced concrete ADA compliant walking surface at 3315 Liberty Avenue, 6th Ward, 7th Council District.
Thank you. And can we have Councilwoman Gross, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Coghill, you have a waiver of rules, Rule 8 for Bill 1196?
Okay, motion to waiver, Bill Number 1196, Rule 8.
Motion is, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On tomorrow's standing committee agenda. Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1198, Resolution Adopting the Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Food Facilities Plan for the Baumhaus Phase II Project, which will involve the development of a 198 multi-unit apartment complex with associated indoor amenities, as well as a leasing office. The site address is 5536 Baum Boulevard in the 8th Ward. Bill Number 1199, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Food Facilities Plan for the North Shore Parking Garage. Bill Number 1200, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an agreement with Goodwill of Southwestern PA for administrative services related to the 2021 Learn and Earn Summer Youth Employment Program, at a cost not to exceed $200,000. Bill Number 1201, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an intergovernmental corporation agreement with the County of Allegheny and Partner for Work for shared operation and administration of the 2021 Learn and Earn Summer Youth Employment Program in an amount not to exceed $1,500,000 for the payment of costs thereof.
Thank you. And we have Councilman Gross, Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
Good morning, Madam President. No new papers.
Good morning, Councilman. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Good morning.
Morning.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1202, Resolution Providing for Further Renewal by the Council of a Declaration of Disaster Emergency Ratified by Council on March 17th, 2020, to extend the effectiveness of the declaration for 29 additional days, thereby making the declaration effective until March 16th, 2021, in response to the ongoing public health emergency associated with the spread of the coronavirus. Bill Number 1203, Resolution Authorizing Pursuit to Chapter 210 of the City Code, the Mayor and Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to accept a donation from Allegheny County on the installation Wi-Fi hotspots at the McKinley and Phillips Recreation Center in 24 months of internet service valued at $40,703.24 to offer free Wi-Fi to the surrounding community.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
Motion to waive the rules of council so Bill 1202 can appear under final business today.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, the, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the bill appear on, today's the end of the meeting today. Thank you, Councilman. And we have Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Madam President. Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 1204, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into a license agreement with SMG and Sports and Exhibition Authority of Allegheny County, at a cost not to exceed $750 for the purpose of hosting a Department of Public Safety Promotion Ceremony at the David L. Lawrence Convention Center on March 4th, 2021. Bill Number 1205, Resolution Approving the Recommendation Made by the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure that the concrete portion of the Mount Royal Road be paved with asphalt in accordance with Section 41706 of the Code of Ordinances. Bill Number 1206, Resolution Approving the Recommendation Made by the Director of the Department of Resolution approving the recommendation made by the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure that Boulevard Drive be paved with asphalt in accordance with section four seventeen oh six of the Code of Ordinances.
And we have Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance and Asset Management.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Good morning. And we have Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill number twelve oh seven. Resolution amending resolution number two sixty-two, which authorized the mayor and director of city planning to accept a forty-six thousand dollar grant award from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources to support the development of a field district park master plan and to combine these fundings with the previously budgeted sixty thousand dollars. City may enter into contract to hire consultants, Grounds Well Design Group, Inc., to develop aforementioned master plan with a total contract value not to exceed one hundred and six thousand dollars. Bill number twelve oh eight. Resolution further amending resolution number eight forty. Entitled adopting and approving the twenty twenty capital budget and the twenty twenty CDVG program and the twenty twenty through twenty twenty-five capital improvement program, so as to identify specific projects in City Council District Seven and authorize a subsequent agreement for operation, administrative expenses, maintenance, purchase of equipment and/or rehabilitation of neighborhood facilities on behalf of the residents of the city.
Thank you. And we have myself, Chair of Hearings. We have ten appointments.
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill number eleven fifty-eight. Resolution appointing Sloan Davidson as a member of the Gender Equity Commission for a term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Bill number eleven fifty-nine. Resolution appointing Marcel Newman as a member of the Gender Equity Commission for a term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Bill number eleven sixty. Resolution reappointing Jesse Ramey as a member of the Gender Equity Commission for a term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Bill number eleven sixty-one. Resolution reappointing Janet Manuel as a member of the Gender Equity Commission for a term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Bill number eleven sixty-two. Resolution appointing Sarah Schultz as a member of Gender Equity Commission for a term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Bill number eleven sixty-three. Resolution reappointing Sarah Hanson as a member of the Gender Equity Commission for a term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Bill number twelve oh nine. Resolution appointing Roy Blankenship as a member of the Shade Tree Commission for a term to expire March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Bill number twelve ten. Resolution appointing Judy Hale as a member of the Gender Equity Commission for a term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Bill number twelve eleven. Resolution reappointing Mary Ann Herman as a member of the Ethics Hearing Board for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Bill number twelve twelve. Resolution appointing Orlando Valentine as a member of the Ethics Hearing Board for a term to expire June twenty, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Bill, that's it, for the appointments. You want me to read the, maybe you have two communications if you want to take those separately.
Let's do those separately. Can I have a motion to approve the appointments?
Motion to approve, a very brief discussion.
Thank you, Councilman. Wait, we have a second.
We have a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman. I just wanted to give a shout out to Jamil Bay and his service on the Shade Tree Commission and to thank him for his time, effort and energy. He's one of the busiest people that I know and he's engaged in everything. He's a, he is a real asset to community. But at the same time, um, the newest appointee, um, dear Lord, why am I just blanking?
Roy Blankenship.
Yeah, thank you, Roy Blankenship. He's, you know, uh, he is a young leadership coming up. And Roy, he's another one. He is busy as what he is. He has a very big family. He has several jobs. He's always at every community function that there is. And he is beyond excited to be appointed to the commission and he let us know in a, know in certain terms that he's happy to serve. And so I just want to give him a shout out for all he does and his willingness to take on even something else to do in his already busy schedule. So thanks, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members? And then, no, is everyone okay if we just move these forward without interviews? I personally, I'm okay because that's a lot of interviews. And I feel, I, I feel like the mayor's office better these very well. So, okay, with all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? They're all approved and thank you. And we have two communications. One for Shingle Park Ring Trust Fund fiscal audit and one for twenty twenty gender equity commission.
Bill number twelve thirteen. Communication from Michael Lamb, City Controller submitting a fiscal audit of the Shingle Park Ring Trust Fund dated February twenty twenty-one. Bill number twelve fourteen. Communication for Lenapion Jane, Executive Director of the Gender Equity Commission submitting the twenty twenty report of the Gender Equity Commission.
Can I have a motion to read, receive and file?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
They're approved. And then, um, we'll move on to unfinished business. We have any unfinished business before council? Madam Cook, did you tell me once before this is when we should do the bill for?
Uh, no, on the final action. I put it on there and you should see it at the bottom of your agenda. It'll go on the motions and resolutions, the final action.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And so our next order of business is committees for final action. And we have Councilman Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law. He's sending me a lot of text messages.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill number eleven eighty-eight. Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for February tenth, twenty twenty-one, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number eleven nineteen. Resolution amending resolution five eighty-eight, authorizing the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with McGrill and Associates for professional consultant services in connection with billboard tax litigation by increasing to one hundred and three thousand two hundred dollars. Total cost from ninety thousand dollars to an amount not to exceed one hundred ninety-three thousand two hundred dollars. Bill number eleven twenty. Resolution authorizing pursuant to chapter two ten of the city code, the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Safety to accept a donation from Steelers Charities of forty thousand dollars to be deposited into the Public Safety Trust Fund. Bill number eleven seventy-nine. Resolution amending resolution eighty of twenty twenty to add specific pay information and adjust the code account information to allow payment in twenty twenty-one relating to the purchase of certain property located at four oh two Timberland Avenue and four oh six Timberland Avenue.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, we'll move on. The bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of a vote, aye, when the name is called, those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasberger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Mrs. Kell Smith President. Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes or finally passed. Councilman Corey O'Connor, Committee on Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill number eleven eighty-nine. Report of the Committee on Public Safety Services for February tenth, twenty twenty-one, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number eleven twenty-one. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of Public Safety to enter into a project agreement with Hughes Corp. to host three executive fellows for twelve months at no cost to the city. Bill number eleven eighty. Resolution authorizing the Department of Public Safety Bureau of Fire to execute fire hydrant application for the placement of hydrant by Penn American Water in the city.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of their passage? Will vote aye when their name is called, those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Sorry, aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasberger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes or finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill number eleven ninety. Report of the Committee on Public Works for February tenth, twenty twenty-one, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number eleven oh nine. Resolution granting onto Community College of Allegheny County. Their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain and use at their own cost and expense in existing set of historical stone steps at nine fifteen Ridge Avenue, the twenty-second ward, first council district. Bill number eleven ten. Resolution amending resolution four forty-seven. Entitled Resolution providing for an amended agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary engineering phase of Penn Avenue Reconstruction Phase Two project and providing for the payment of municipal incurred costs not to exceed eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Federally reimbursable at eighty percent. And the municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed ten thousand dollars. To increase the total not to exceed to one million nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Federally reimbursable at eighty percent. And the municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed eighteen thousand dollars. Bill number eleven eleven. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation's Automated Red Light Enforcement Funding Program to make signal and intersection upgrades at the intersection of Beaver and Chateau Street. And further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed one hundred and sixteen thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollars. The grant requires a match from the city in the amount of twenty-nine thousand one hundred and fifty-nine dollars for this stated purpose for a total project cost one hundred and forty-five thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars. Bill number eleven twelve. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of Mobility and Infrastructure to apply for grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation under the Multi-Module Transportation Fund to provide funding for the design and construction of Davis Avenue Pedestrian Bridge. The grant proposal includes an ask of one million eight hundred three thousand five hundred thirty-three dollars and eighty-two cents with a local match of five hundred seventy-two thousand nine hundred forty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents to come out of the city's twenty twenty capital budget and two hundred thousand dollars in the form of a grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed two million five hundred seventy-six thousand four hundred seventy-six dollars and fifty cents. Bill number eleven thirteen. Resolution authorizing the mayor of the city and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to apply for grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation under the Multi-Module Transportation Fund to provide funding for the reconstruction of the Fraser Street steps and the Romeo Street steps. The grant proposal includes an ask of six hundred sixty-six thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars with a local match of two hundred thousand dollars to come out of the city's twenty twenty capital budget. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed eight hundred and sixty-six thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars. Bill number eleven fourteen. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to apply for grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation under the Multi-Module Transportation Fund to provide funding for sidewalk construction, curb reconstruction, street and pedestrian lighting and small retaining walls on Irvine Street between Greenfield and Berkwood Street, Lewis Playground. The grant proposal includes an ask of eight hundred and forty thousand dollars with a local match of three hundred fifty-six thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars to come out of the city's twenty nineteen capital budget. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed one million one hundred and ninety-six thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars for this stated purpose. In the event of an award, funds will be transferred to ramp and public sidewalk. Bill number eleven fifteen. Resolution further amending and supplementing resolution number eight fifty-five of twenty eleven entitled adopting and approving the twenty twelve capital budget, twenty twelve through twenty seventeen capital improvement program by decreasing two Alton Field concession stand projects by a combined thirty thousand dollars and adding twenty-five Carrick Avenue Project Dairy District Pavilion Property Acquisition in the same amount. Bill number eleven sixteen. Resolution further amending resolution number seven nineteen providing for an agreement or use of existing agreement and/or contracts for the purchase of materials, supplies, equipment and/or services for various projects in connection with the Neighborhood Needs Program in Council District Four and providing for the payment of the cost thereof by transferring thirty thousand dollars from Alton Field concession stand to twenty-five Carrick Avenue Dairy District Pavilion Property Acquisition.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills?
Madam, Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
As everyone knows, for the last thirty years, I have been a tenured professor of communications at Community College of Allegheny County. I have been and still am a full-time professor. I'm grateful the courts have concluded that it is just and appropriate for me to be a councilperson and a professor. But in this moment, because of, I want to err on the side of caution. So therefore, I respectfully am going to abstain on bill eleven oh nine because it does affect my employer, my other employer, the Community College of Allegheny County. And so I have sort of declared that and will abstain from that vote today.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess.
I want to abstain on bill eleven oh nine, but aye on the rest of those bills.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasberger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
On bill eleven oh nine, eyes eight, one of thinking all of the bills, eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required votes are finally passed. That moves us on to Councilmember Bruce Kraus, Committee on Human Resources.
Uh, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill number eleven ninety-one. Report of the Committee on Human Resources for February tenth, twenty twenty-one, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number eleven seventeen. Bill number eleven seventeen, ordinance amending the City of Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances and Title One Administrative Article Eleven Human Resources, Chapter one eighty three Holidays, Section one eighty three oh one, holidays designated to designate Juneteenth as a holiday for the City of Pittsburgh employees.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, I just would like to say this is the Juneteenth. Um, I want to thank the Mayor's Office and Councilman Lavelle and Councilman Burgess and other members who work so hard uh, with B. Marshall, including the Clerk's Office who's who's met with them and uh, tried to help us with some things and expanding the um events for Juneteenth uh, in into other districts, including my own. So I just want to thank everyone for recognizing this day and working so hard to get to this point, but I really want to acknowledge B. Marshall and the amazing work he's done. I mean, he has done a lot of work and I can't wait to text him and tell him that's passed because he asks all the time, has it passed? And and he's really excited about this. And I think that um, working together and doing these kinds of things uh, to make people more aware of uh, or the history in the city of Pittsburgh and and that includes and make sure that we really highlight the uh things that the black community had had gone through, I think is really important. And I think it's more important to us bring bringing us together as one city when we recognize that everyone had a role to play in building our city the way it is and working together is how we really accomplish a lot more than than we do separately. So I just really want to thank B. For being a true leader. I want to thank the Mayor's Office and Councilman Lavelle and Councilman uh uh Burgess for always making sure that the uh, black community is is on the forefront and on and on all the legislation and things that we do here. A lot of us know what they do publicly, but we know behind the scenes, they're always fighting a battle uh, for the black community. So I just want to thank them for their for their leadership and I want to thank B. For his tremendous amount of work and the mayor for agreeing that this is a worthwhile event or worthwhile uh, day to celebrate. So with that said, uh, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes or finally passed. Thank you, everyone. Uh, that moves us on to Bobby Wilson Committee on in the final committee of the day. Um, Bobby Wilson Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill number eleven ninety two, reported the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for February tenth twenty twenty one with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number eleven twenty two, resolution further amending resolution number seven sixty eight of twenty two thousand nine adopting and approving the twenty ten capital budget in the twenty ten CDBG program and approving the twenty ten through twenty fourteen capital improvement program by adjusting various line items in conformance with City Council's twenty ten capital budget amendments by reducing Birmingham Foundation by one hundred seventy six dollars and seventy four cents increasing Birmingham Foundation for Sheer Association by one hundred seventy six dollars and seventy four cents and authorizing a subsequent agreement. Bill number eleven twenty three, resolution further amending resolution number seven seventy two entitled adopting and approving the twenty thirteen capital budget and the twenty thirteen CDBG program and moving the twenty thirteen through twenty eighteen capital improvement program so as to reduce Falk School United Way Program by two thousand dollars increase Boys and Girls Club of Western Pennsylvania by two thousand dollars and authorize a subsequent agreement. Bill number eleven twenty four, resolution further amending resolution number seven ninety six adopting and approving the twenty fourteen capital budget and the twenty fourteen CDBG program and approving the twenty fourteen through twenty nineteen capital improvement program by reducing Birmingham Foundation by seven thousand three hundred sixty five dollars and forty six cents and increasing Birmingham Foundation for Sheer Association by seven thousand three hundred sixty five dollars and forty six cents and authorizing a subsequent agreement. Bill number eleven twenty five, resolution further amending resolution number eight sixteen amended entitled resolution adopting and approving the twenty sixteen capital budget the twenty sixteen CDBG program and approving the twenty sixteen through twenty twenty one capital improvement program so as to reduce Saint Clair Athletic Association by four thousand dollars increase for Sheer Association by four thousand dollars and authorize a subsequent agreement. Bill number eleven twenty six, resolution further amending resolution number seven seventy two entitled resolution adopting and approving the twenty seventeen capital budget and the twenty seventeen CDBG program, approving the twenty seventeen through twenty twenty two capital improvement program so as to reduce Saint Clair's Athletic Association by four thousand dollars and the Conservation Consultants Inc. by twenty five hundred dollars and increasing for Sheer Association by four thousand dollars and Children's Museum of Pittsburgh by twenty five hundred dollars and authorize a subsequent agreement. Bill number eleven twenty seven, resolution further amending resolution number seven ninety seven entitled adopting and approving the twenty eighteen capital budget in the twenty eighteen CDBG program and the twenty eighteen through twenty twenty three capital improvement program so as to reduce Saint Clair Athletic Association by four thousand dollars reduce Saint Rosalia Moonbreak Bank by three thousand dollars increase for Sheer Association by four thousand dollars increase Jewish Association on Aging by fifteen hundred dollars and increase the Pittsburgh Community Kitchen by fifteen hundred dollars and authorize a subsequent agreement. Bill number eleven twenty eight, resolution further amending resolution number eight sixty three entitled adopting and approving the twenty nineteen capital budget the twenty nineteen CDBG program, the twenty nineteen through twenty twenty four capital improvement program so as to reduce Saint Clair Athletic Association by four thousand dollars park property planning by five thousand dollars and Public Safety Zone Six by twenty five hundred dollars and increase for Sheer Association by four thousand dollars and Brookline Christian Food Pantry by seven thousand five hundred dollars and authorize a subsequent agreement.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills?
Uh, briefly, Madam President.
Councilman.
Thank you very much. So uh, the reallocation of monies that had one at one time going to Saint Clair Athletic Association that are now going to for Shear. It it would be easy to for uh, the public at large to misunderstand those uh, re appropriations. Saint Clair Athletic Association actually was a senior uh, programming that actually took place uh, in the uh, Arlington neighborhood for as many years, at least as I've been in office and before that. Uh, they are no longer uh, an organization uh, and they have uh, formally disbanded. And so the monies, the four thousand dollars that we allocated every year to assist them with, you know, their basic operations is now going into the for Sheer Association because of the wide service uh, area that they provide, but it's not, we're not taking funding away from an athletic program by any means. It actually is a senior programming uh, organization that just uh, has disbanded and no longer exists. So thank you for letting me make that clarification.
Thank you so much, Councilman, for that. And thank you for their work that they do in the community as well. Um, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, the bills are ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Excuse me, Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, the bills haven't received the legally required number of votes or finally passed. That moves us on to motions and resolutions. We have final action on bill um, twelve oh two, uh, the Declaration of Disaster Emergency. Councilman Lavelle. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, you read the bill.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill number twelve oh two, resolution providing for further renewal by the council of a declaration of disaster emergency ratified by council on March seventeenth, twenty twenty to extend the effectiveness of the declaration for twenty nine additional days, thereby making the declaration effective until March sixteenth, twenty twenty one, in response to the ongoing public health emergency associated with spread of the coronavirus.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bill. Was there any discussion on the bill?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. Um, we heard a great deal like from public comment today about the impact of evictions on people in the city of Pittsburgh. Um, I just want to repeat some of those numbers that we were provided by um, Ann Wright, who works at Carnegie Mellon University with um, they create lab, which is tracking and mapping evictions in the city. That there were some hundred and fifty eight evictions scheduled for March, right, that have already been filed. Um, and a hundred or so that have already gone through so much of the process that they're at the final stage and could be seeing an order of um, possession as we speak here, right, that they are um, cleared for for final the order of possession, which is where the met the um um, constables show up and remove you from your home. Uh, and that there have been twenty orders for possession, people removed from their home by constables um, during this moratorium. So firstly, we definitely want citizens to understand that the moratoriums as implemented in Pennsylvania are not complete. Um, that you are still at risk of eviction. Um, and I, there were some texts going back and forth, and I want to read the language of the order from the presiding judges to the magistrates, magistrates, courts being where these decisions are made. Um, because the way um, you'll see, it is worded so that basically uh, almost every reason for eviction is still allowed. The only ones not allowed are lack of payment or end of lease. Um, but I'll I'll read it just briefly here. Um, landlord tenant proceedings based upon non-payment of rent or end of lease scheduled uh, for the period of February first through the twenty sixth, twenty twenty one shall be postponed to a date after February twenty six. Um, landlord tenant proceedings based upon breach of lease, which is basically any other reason, may proceed as scheduled in person beginning February first, provided that all COVID protocols and occupancy restrictions and courtrooms and weight rooms are followed. So what I'm hearing um, from people who are working with um, tenants who are at risk is that um, as we heard in some of the testimony, a case like having your grandkids in your apartment is allowable in this supposed moratorium. Um, and so that's why I've been trying to communicate that there's there's so many loopholes that we really need to strengthen um, the moratorium. We have appealed directly to Judge Clark to do so. She is the presiding magistrate. Um, I've appealed to her in person, face to face on Zoom. I think it was back in December, as many other people in the eviction uh, prevention cohort, um, who I want to give a shout out to. So many organizations that are working together collaboratively to try to track, understand, and figure out solutions. Um, and that they've been meeting uh, for many months throughout this crisis um, in order to support tenants. And I really appreciate their work. Um, and we did endeavor to, we got her to do this one month extension, but to but she did not tighten those loopholes. Uh, so that is why there are still cases proceeding. Um, I will not try to present a hostile amendment today, but members know that I shared them language to amend this declaration of emergency, I think, um, to Councilwoman Strasburger, Councilman O'Connor um, and Councilman Lavelle, because we had all kind of worked on wills of council or moratorium um, statements um, over these last ten months. And um, so there is draft language that is based on the Harrisburg Declaration of Emergency. Um, and members know that we got an email um, from our law department um, saying late last night, saying that we 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 can't do this somehow um, under as as Pittsburgh, the city of Pittsburgh. Um, I want to say that acknowledge that also, um, in addition to members, I've been working closely with um, Director Powell, Lindsay Powell, and the administration who's does so much good work on housing and is incredibly knowledgeable about this. I'm disappointed in the law department's opinion. Um, you know, you know that I definitely have differences of opinion with our law department sometimes, but they have given us hope that there is another avenue they would like us to pursue. I do not think we can take much time pursuing these avenues. And if it doesn't look like other powers that the city has by ordinance are going to work out, I think that we should also concurrently continue to um, debate whether or not we can um do it under emergency declaration. Um, I maintain that, you know, this is a once in a hundred year global pandemic. We should not be putting people on the streets. Um, and as I said to Judge Clark, and I'll say again here, as I always remind us, we know that in the city of Pittsburgh, people under the poverty line are seventy percent female-headed households with children. That means we're putting our children on the streets. Uh, and we cannot, and we should not do that. Um, and um, so while I say debate, I don't think we should take longer than a week to sort this out. And that we should either try it through amending our emergency powers, and I've been um, corresponding with Madam Clerk, and she says that we would, we do have the ability to amend um, in session. Even if we pass this version unamended finally today, we could amend it tomorrow. We could amend it next Tuesday. Um, until we should um, work together quickly um, to figure this out. Um, and figure out what, and other cities have done this, certainly in Pennsylvania, Harrisburg has done it, and other cities have worked to make sure that the moratoriums are not so broad that they're still that we're still putting people on the street. Right? It's so loose, I should say, not broad. So um, I look forward and I appreciate members' um, energy and efforts. Um, but we, and I'm glad, I want to thank the speakers for showing up today to uh, remind us that um, there people right now at risk of being put on the sidebar. That's all I have today, Madam President. Thank you.
Madam President, ma'am.
Councilman Kraus.
Yeah, thank you. I'll be brief. Um, I just want to um uh, sort of continue Councilwoman Gross's remarks. Uh, I know you and I talked about this last night. Uh, we had a conversation with Chief Gilman this morning. Uh, Chief Gilman did share the the administration's desire to work with council uh, on this. Uh, and I'll even quote uh, what he sent over to council that uh uh, we putting through the emergency declaration today is the right thing to do and then uh, working collectively between council and the administration over the next seven days to create a joint council administration legislative effort. So I I know that went around this morning, and a number of members have responded. I just want to reassure all of those that are at risk that uh, we're not asleep at the switch. We understand how desperately important this is uh, to constituency, and I greatly appreciate the willingness of members of council and the administration to work collectively and cooperatively over the next uh, seven days or hopefully even less uh, to come to some resolution and solution. So appreciate um, the efforts and thank my fellow colleagues for their efforts in the administration as well. And uh, thank you for letting me share uh, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members? No other members? And I'm just going to thank uh, Councilwoman Gross, because I do know she has been working on this uh, for several weeks with other members. Uh, I heard she mentioned Councilman Lavelle, Strasburger, Wilson, and did I miss somebody else, Councilwoman? O'Connor. Yes. So I just want to make sure I acknowledge them. So I thank you all for all your work on it. But um, I think, acknowledge that Councilwoman Gross has been leading the charge on this. Um, but I also want to say that all members um, are supportive, and I want to say that the administration also said in the email that the mayor has been very supportive of the efforts um regarding the moratorium and has supported the state and federal moratoriums as well. So with that, so I do think that we are going to get to a place where we're passing something. Um, we just want to make sure that we're not giving false hope to people. We just want to make sure that we're not giving false hope to people and that we're doing something that's going to turn around, and we're going to lose in a court battle because. We are not Harrisburg, even though there may be some avenues, and there are some loopholes. That the law department did say that they would work with us on and making sure that we're. Coming up with something that would withstand a challenge. So that's what we want to do, want to give people real hope, real solutions, and really quickly. So I think that time is of the essence, as I mentioned in the email. This morning, and I do want to thank the people who brought this to our attention, but I also want to say. I think coming down and making sure that you're respectful in working with council is helpful. Making threats and comments to council members is not only, not only, not only a good practice. It's also something that has the law, the the. Public Safety Department looking into some of those things now. So I just want to say, you know, work with us, we want to work with you. And we want to help help people in Pittsburgh. We all want to help. Avoid evictions if possible, but I do want to acknowledge that Councilman Kraus, you sent an email that some of those eviction cases are for drug problems and. Some other.
Policing, police calls.
Thing issues. And so what I will say to that is there's a lot of people in our communities who are waiting to, because they live day to day with some of the violence and some of the. Activity that goes along with drug activity in a house, and sometimes it's putting other people at risk and also making the community an unsafe place. So while I want to protect people who cannot pay, and I want to protect and people that need help, I want to get them help. If somebody's having a drug and alcohol problem, I think there should be some correlation between the police action and help. I think that, and I know that we worked with the. Our Housing Opportunity Fund is working with our magistrates to connect people who cannot pay. And with some of the programs and things that we have to offer within the city. So I'm glad that those things are taking place, and that's, I think, more of those things. Or what's going to make a difference in Pittsburgh is connecting people to help, not just stopping things, but actually getting help for people. And so with that said. The bill is not ready for final action is. All favor. Or the voice vote.
I'm from Burgess. Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Hi.
Mr. Kraus.
Hi.
Mr. Lavelle.
Hi.
Mr. O'Connor.
Hi.
Ms. Strasburger.
Mr. Wilson. This is Cal Smith, President.
Hi.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bill haven't received the legally required number of votes or finally passed, and Councilwoman. Gross will look forward to working with you and your leadership and working with the administration on this and bringing something forward for the for the moratorium. We have meeting announcements. Council will continue to meet. Council will meet tomorrow morning, Wednesday, February seventeenth, for the standing committee meeting at ten AM. To register to speak, please fill out the sign up form in its entirety. On the council meeting webpage by nine AM Wednesday morning. You may also register by calling the city clerk's office at four one two two five five two one three eight by the registration deadlines. Do we have anything for members?
Madam President, ma'am.
Yes, Councilman.
I just briefly, if I may, I know the last ten days, two weeks, three weeks, maybe have been have been challenging, to say the least. In terms of being able to respond to to snow removal. But I also want to. Keep in mind how important it is to to take a moment from time to time to thank the men and women that are out there. When we are largely at home, safe and and warm in our homes, they're out there at. You know, twelve and one and two and three and four AM. Pre-salting and treating and doing the very best that they can, and we've had some short calls, and I don't want to gloss over them. And pretend that somehow they didn't exist, but in the same breath, it's just really important. Take a moment and to thank the members of the Public Works team that are out there, and there are many. That that are very sincere about doing their jobs and working diligently. We have. We've worked very closely with Jeff Cook. He's has a very difficult job on his hands right now. I know Anthony Coghill, Councilman Coghill, will definitely confer. With my remarks that. He's he's been a trooper. He's really been out there and really. Trying to deliver the very best services that we can. And I think it's important for the public to understand it, and please, I'm not trying to make excuses. It's important to understand that every snowfall is not the same, the time they come, the type of snow that they are. You know, the the hour that they come in, whether it's early morning, late at night. So many different factors come into play, but I would like us collectively just to take a moment to recognize and thank the men and women of Public Works. And the efforts that they're putting out there in what so far has proven to be a difficult winter, and and we expect more to come. And I certainly don't want them to think that we don't have their backs and don't appreciate what they're doing and. You know, are sending them out there just to do a mission that we're not supporting. And then, if I may, I really would like to speak to the passing of Joey King. They broke the mold when when they, when God made Joey King, he broke the mold. There's no one quite like him. Whether, you know, you were. Believed in the things that he fought for weren't necessarily, you know, in in step with the things he fought for. He he rec, he represented his constituency with a fire and a passion. Unlike anything I have ever seen before and probably will ever since. And the passing of Joey King is really, it's the passing of an era. There there has never been, there will never be another one like Joey King. And I I think it is important that that, you know, we. We we recognize his passing and the contribution that he made. And the good times and the difficult times and the heated debates and and everything that came with it. One has to conclude that there was, there was a hell of a fighter in Joey King, and he represented his constituency. Very well, and he will be greatly missed. So thank you for letting me do that, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members?
Madam Clark, I've been saying that for the last few weeks. I'm so sorry, Madam President. Every time I say madam, I say clerk. President.
I wish I had her salary.
May I?
Yes, please, host.
Thank you. I. I also want to extend my sympathies to our firefighters union of the passing of Mr. King. I didn't get a chance to work with him. In my time on council, but I I am sorry for their loss. And to his family, of course. But I also wanted to address a bit about the snowplows and lack thereof and salt trucks and lack thereof. I did check yesterday's snow plow tracker. And I tracked this morning and it's offline. I've got the website up in front of me and it's not showing a map. There were quite a few side streets. Throughout Bloomfield and especially Stanton Heights, we got a call, and I know the street there, I won't name the street, that I looked up specifically yesterday. And it had not been plowed or salted in the twenty four hour period before I looked at it at all, nor its neighboring streets. So there were entire kind of street grids of tertiary streets, of residential streets. That hadn't seen a truck. And now, very often, you know, when we have this kind of continuous on on and off snowfall. Your street may have snow on it, but if you look and believe the data on the snow plow tracker, it had been plowed or salted. And you could see that by looking backwards, four hours, eight hours, twenty four hours. But these streets had not been touched, and that's the complaint I'm getting from people. And I do did also read in the media that there was a couple of dozen, maybe at least a dozen. Trucks not out because there were no drivers for them. So not to take anything away from the drivers who are out, and we were grateful to them and for the dangers that they face and the hours that they keep. But that we we heard this in our budget hearing, that we need more commercially licensed drivers. And. And that is, that's kind of a challenge, I think, that is, we're feeling now. And so that they're literally, we've purchased the trucks. We've purchased the equipment, but the the equipment sitting idle. Because we don't have the personnel. So I just wanted to acknowledge that and say that you're not hallucinating. That's very possible. Your street has not been touched and that there is a lack of personnel power. In order to deal with snowfall and at this magnitude and to hit all the streets that need to be hit. So I appreciate the. The places where DPW was able to get out to people who were snowed in, where they were able to to meet some of our requests. But as far as I can see, they had not, for the information I have in front of me, they have not hit those streets in Stanton Heights yet, so we're still going to be asking for them to get out there. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members?
Madam President, I should have added, and if I did, forgive me, but. You and I have talked about this numerous times. We work very closely and collectively with the mayor's office and with. Especially with Chief Gilman representing Mayor Paduto and. And, you know, there were those rough spots, no doubt about it, but getting him over to the mayor's office and especially through Chief Gilman. We were able to bring relief, maybe not, you know, at that exact moment, but relatively quickly, we were able to to. Bring relief and I just would also like to piggyback a little bit on Councilwoman Gross's remarks about. People being out and not being able to operate trucks, and I'm not a hundred percent sure if it's completely due to COVID or to. You know, pandemic or to quarantine. I suspect it has some part to play in it, but I I would agree. We, and I think working with it, Councilman Coghill, that's a really good question to ask is how can we ensure that there are sufficient drivers to man every possible vehicle? That we have to in the snow, I don't want to say it's no emergency, but in the snowfall that we have. Every available person that can operate a vehicle with a commercial driver's license being able to be out there. So just wanted to add that. Thank you.
The other members.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Coghill.
When we talk snow, I just have to chime in. I'm sorry. I want to thank, you know, Councilwoman Kraus's remarks about the drivers who are out there and Councilwoman Gross as to what she said. And it's all, you know, it's it's drivers that we can't get in for, you know, triple time. They're making triple time, and we can't get enough drivers for whatever reason. See, equipment, you know, it's some of the trucks are older, the tracking system, there are some flaws in it, many flaws. But I will say, you know, we have been working closely with the administration. We have identified. Many of these issues and we've addressed them, you know, and things have definitely gotten better. And, you know, I don't wish bad service on anybody, but Councilwoman Gross, I'm so glad to hear some other district, other than me and Mr. Kraus. Are having issues like this because, you know, I think they're exasperated in in my district, especially because of the hills. But, you know, I'm confident that, you know, we're identifying all the mishaps and the problems that we have. You know, working closely with the administration, Councilman Kraus and I have been, you know, diligently. Making sure that we address all these issues. So. So with that said, I just want to reiterate, yes, the drivers who are out there, they're doing a fantastic job. It's a dangerous job. You know, and I applaud them for what they do. These younger drivers are, you know, whoever they are, not stepping up and wanting to make triple time. You know, I don't know what else to do. I mean, we can't pay them any better than that. So. You know, we did take measures to ensure, working with the union, that drivers will be available when that time comes. But but yeah, so that's all. Thanks.
Hey, Councilman.
I would like to chime in too.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
I think Councilwoman Gross.
Just quickly, I, you know, in terms of South of the River, I want to make it clear the Councilwoman Kel Smith as well. We, the three of us have really been a team for South of the River for doing our very best to work collectively, cooperatively, especially with. Department of Public Works and the administration to provide the services that our constituency absolutely deserve, even in difficult times. So just wanted to make sure that the Councilwoman or Council President Kel Smith was in that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I just want to. Do something I don't think you've probably ever seen me do. I want to shame a couple of corporate franchise businesses. That are in, specifically Wendy's and Rite Aid in Lawrenceville. Most people know the intersection of Fortieth and Butler Street. I am looking at photos of their driveways perfectly clear, like clear and dry, not a speck of snow or ice. On the driveways on their parcel and their sidewalks are like five inches thick with snow and ice. So shame on you, Wendy's and Rite Aid. Get out there and shovel and salt your sidewalks. That is a really high traffic. Thoroughfare, you know, in normal times, you've got school kids and things like that, but so people are trying to get to bus stops, they're trying to get to grocery stores. And they're impassable. And the citizens, I tried calling them myself yesterday. They wouldn't pick up the phone. We've been calling three one one, three one one has been doing what it does, and the host, you're responsible for your sidewalks. Even as a business, and you need to get out there and clear the sidewalks. All the other commercial property owners do it, and you need to get out there and clear those sidewalks too. It's very dangerous for people. I'm sorry about that. I don't think you've ever seen me do that before, President. But I just wanted to add a little, since we have a little bit of a broadcast reach here to shame them publicly, and I'll continue to try to reach them to get them to clear their sidewalks.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other members? Saying that, I'm just going to say, again, I want to thank Joe King and his family. And the firefighters for all that they've done for the city and and. Really want to recognize that he has done so many amazing things. I will say that I spoke to Councilman O'Connor, and he's going to work with the. Union to try to do something in the council chambers or something that the family is agreeable to doing where we could all. Participate or take part in, because I know we all want to recognize Joe and let his family, his wife know, we appreciate. All that he has done for the city of Pittsburgh. And with that, and I'll go on to the real quick conversation about the. The snow removal. I mean, I I've heard the one person say that she called one of our offices a hundred and fifty times. So I'm going to call that person after to see what the street is and see what we can do to address that issue. It'd be helpful to know the streets so that we can make sure we're addressing. Those gaps and services to the residents of the city. And I do want to thank and acknowledge our our crews that are out there working sixteen hour days and then going on social media and seeing some of the negative. But I I also want to thank our residents who have been very, very patient through all this, and they, there are more of more residents that are saying, look, we understand, be patient. Then there are those on social media saying the native, that you can go to social media on any page, any any neighborhood, and you'll see the negative. But a lot of times what we get in our offices or on our cell phones or around the community are people thanking our crews for all that they do. And so I just want to acknowledge that the crew's doing a tremendous job, but so do our supervisors, our foremen. And I think that the. The mayor's office, I I I text Dan Gilmer, sent him an email at three o'clock in the morning. He responds. I mean, he's just amazing. And so I think that, you know, some of the things that we that we see that we advocate for behind the scenes or. Council members do have some concerns with the with the tracking system, and we do have some concerns of. But we also also see some of the improvements, and there's a lot of good things happening. I said this the other day on my on my social media pages, I said. People have not figured this out. There's been mayor after mayor that there's been issues. We had Act forty seven. We weren't able to buy equipment. There's a lot of things that factor into this. And there's been director after director that's, you know, been challenged with trying to come up with a solution or figuring out a new new way to address. Snow removal and treating the roads in advance. It's been happening for decades, and and I think a lot of what people need to realize is that maybe we just don't pay enough taxes to buy all the equipment, hire all the people. That we need to have the kind of service that we really, really want. But that doesn't mean we can't try to get it to some better place, and I do think that's what this administration is trying to do and working with Councilman Coghill and others to do those things. But I will say, one of the ways we do increase our, and we will increase our workforce is by the those of us who voted for the park tax. To make sure that we'll be hiring additional people in in the Department of Public Works, which will allow us to have more people focusing on the parks. While others do their job and focusing on street maintenance and snow removal. So I I just want to say that 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 is part of what I can hope to see. From the park tax. But that says, anything else from members? Saying that, we have a motion to excuse the absent member and approve Ms. and join the meeting.
Done, moved.
Thank you.
Second, second.
On favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Adjourn, be safe, everyone.